Stay on.
Okay. Good morning. I'd like to call us Workshop to Order. For December 10th, our first item of business will be Public Records Request by Jody Dumas and Tracy Beaker.
So, thank you very much. We appreciate your time today on the Workshop Agenda. And I think as Tracy and I talk through this a little bit, what we'd like this to be is just a kind of a conversation with you. We know there's been concerns about public records requests. Tracy, I think, is prepared to talk about our current process and how we currently handle requests. But again, I think it's just a conversation about what would you like to see? What can we do to modify the process to make sure we're aligned to what your expectations are for our delivery of those records when requested? So with that, maybe I'll have Tracy take a look at what and kind of just outline what our current process is.
Sure. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
So, for the most part, the public records requests over the last couple of years have really grown in terms of not only the volume, but the scope of what people are asking for. So, we've gone from 175 a couple of years ago to 241 last year, and we're at about 144 already this year. And in fact, we just got three new ones this morning. So, they're coming in fast and furious, and the team is doing their part to be able to be able to fulfill them as quickly as we possibly can. So with that, I have gone ahead and just for your review and for discussion today, charted out what the process looks like for public records requests. In some cases, it's even more cumbersome than the way in which it's diagrammed, and in some cases, it's a lot easier. Again, it all depends on what it is that's being asked, how readily available that particular record is, and whether or not we can do so in a manner that's expeditious. So, for the most part, when requests come in, it's really a collaborative effort. It's not just any one person in particular that's working on a public records request. It really is multiple departments being able to fulfill various different requests and records that come in. So, from that perspective, the communications team really is the hub with regards to all things public record. And that is not the same as student records, and it's also not the same as employee records. So, these are things that come in from anyone in particular. So, when a record comes in, obviously, we take a look at what they're asking. Do we have sufficient information to be able to move that record request forward? If not, we have to go back to that requester and ask them to either narrowly define what it is that they're looking for or help us out. So with that, we then log the request once we get clarity from that particular requester, and from there, we start to seek the data. We start to ask IT as an example if it's something that has to be pulled that's electronic, whether it happens to be emails or text messages and things like that as well. So, we're asking IT as an example to be able to say, how big is the scope of this particular search? If they happen to be asking for emails between Jody Dumas and myself for a specific period of time, how many emails is that? And what's the review process going to be like to redact that? So, we try to figure out about how many hours it's going to take in terms of human time to be able to conduct the search and do the redaction and review as needed. And based on that, we'll then create an estimate for the requester. And once we have the requester's approval, whether or not they're going to pay for that any type of cost, we typically only charge things that are more than an hour of staff time. And again, those costs that are involved are either 20 cents per sheet if it happens to be something that's printed, or again, we do it on an hourly basis, and it's usually the lowest cost for the person mostly involved in handling that request. And at this particular time, it happens to be our administrative assistant. So, once we get approval of any estimates and costs involved, we then begin to retrieve the data. Once the data is retrieved, then we actually have to go and review it. Because of FERPA law, HIPAA law, and other things, we have to make sure that there isn't any student record in particular that's being disclosed. So with that, we have to review all of those emails and all that correspondence and/or those agendas and things like that as well. Once we do that, then we have to go back and redact if anything needs redaction. If not, it can continue along the process. And we also have to ask, is there something that we also need legal advice on? Do we have to contact our school board attorney in particular to be able to ask specific questions about what we can and cannot disclose? Also, if it winds up taking us longer to be able to review the outcomes of that particular request, in some cases, a new estimate has to be given and provided, and we have to work with the person who requested that to be able to deliver that. Once we do all of that, then, once the records are actually ready for release and distribution, we ask for payment, and from there, we deliver the data and the record. So, again, on paper, it kind of looks a little bit more cumbersome, but a lot of it is really just finding the time to be able to seek out all the information that's being asked. In some cases, it's not just a matter of emails or text messages. In many cases, it's data. It's data that we have to get either from our research and assessment team, data that we have to get from the people who work in pupil support services if it's about a particular student, or from a child advocate in particular. So, from that perspective, again, in some cases, it could take a day or two to be able to fulfill a request. In some cases, it's taken us months to be able to go back and redact thousands of emails that one particular person has asked for. So, it really all depends, again, on the type of requests that come in and the team that is responsible for assembling the data and making sure that that data is reviewed and able to be disclosed. So, that's our current process.
At FSBA, this past week, we were talking about this also. I think it was in the ethics part of it. And when a request comes in, you know, I see it down, you know, almost at the end, you get legal advice. Well, what about, I mean, if something comes in and there's an open case going on, I mean, maybe you could go straight to that to find out, is this information I can give if, in fact, it might not be? I mean, is there, because I would hate for you to go through all of this or jump to something that you probably shouldn't have given out in the first place.
Yes. The answer to that is yes. We do typically take a look at what that request is and whether or not, again, based on FERPA, HIPAA, or any other type of litigation that's taking place that we're all aware of, we go ahead and move that forward.
And addresses and things like that, you know, there are certain ones who have, okay. And the other thing is, when you obtain the payment, what if, you know, you gave somebody the estimate and, you know, it was going to be $1,500 or maybe even $50, and then they decide they don't want to give you the money?
Oftentimes, that does happen. So, we've gone ahead and done everything that we can to fulfill that particular request. And at the end of the day, without that payment, they typically drop the request. So, even though we've incurred time and expense ourselves to be able to fulfill that or to be able to review it, sometimes people don't always want to necessarily have that actual document because of the expense involved.
But if you've already done the, pulled the records and they didn't, I mean, I don't know if we keep them a list, okay, well, from now on, we want you to pay upfront because we've done this to you once or twice before?
That's correct. We do actually have a list of all the records that have been requested over time and which people have actually dropped their request last minute. In some cases, because they no longer need the information. In other cases, it's because they chose not to pay the fee.
In this log that you have, do you share that log? I know, I think this one board, they would get a list monthly of, you know, who's all the record requests are. And they also, they used to have a reason for it. So, like, if somebody wanted the emails between Art and Eric, well, we wanted it in regards to this instance, and we really don't want all the emails between Art and Eric. We only want the emails that pertain to this instance between Art and Eric, and you don't have to pull all those others and redact all those others. I mean, is there a way that you can get down to the reason that, you know, we don't want the emails that don't have, or if he's going to lunch or something, we don't want those emails. We only want those that pertain to this, so you can narrow the search?
Sure. And we try to do that upfront with the requester wherever we possibly can. Just, again, through conversation, through dialogue, be able to really seek what it is that they're looking for, and what's the most expeditious way to be able to provide that to them. In some cases, if they don't know that and they still have a pretty open-ended request, we still have to go through that email even if it is just simply an invitation to lunch because we don't know what the contents of that email is. So, the human element of being able to manually review that is still necessary.
Thank you.
Jane? How many cases or situations did you say we had in the last year?
So far, since July 1, we've had 144 this year. We had 241 last year and 175 the year before. And again, this is just public records requests. It's not requests for student information that usually comes through the registrar's office. It's not requests for background information that the communications team provides to news media, and it's different than some of the employees who request specific personnel files with the HR department directly.
Well, my concern is, and maybe you can comment on this, Carolyn Lee was doing a grand job, I think, in your department, and she's since gone to another department. But everybody wouldn't necessarily do a grand job with this, and I think it takes some expertise. Have we looked at or talked about hiring a paralegal or someone who has more experience in that area? Because I'm thinking with this kind of caseload, we really should be looking at this and working more closely with our attorney in the future because it's serious issues. And sometime, looking at this chart of when you get to Mr. Art Hardy, you know, we might have a significant investment in time and effort and then find out, whoops, this is something we don't want to give. I know there's something right now that we've been asked to give in a public information request about a trial that we're still involved in looking at. And so, I, is, do you think that it's a streamline? This is my question. Are we as streamlined as we can, and are we doing and utilizing the resources that we have to the best of our ability?
Sure. Good question. And I've actually gone ahead and talked to a couple of other school districts to find out what it is that they do. How many people do they have dedicated to the art of public records requests? Are they full-time people? Are they shared responsibilities like ours are? Also, with the county too, in particular, in terms of the volume of requests that they get and how literally, what their team approach looks like also. And in some cases too, some people use various different software tools. But at the end of the day, to review those materials that come in, those documents that come in, it's still a manual process. So, those tools, the software tools, can help you to manage the process of the request, but you still have that human element in terms of manually going through because of all the different laws that we have to pay attention to. We have talked a little bit about potentially having a dedicated person and maybe having that be a paralegal who can work alongside Mr. Hardy in particular. Certainly, someone who does understand and knows Florida sunshine law and other laws as well would be extremely helpful just because, from that perspective, we don't want to always be burdening Mr. Hardy with our time. But at the same time, we have someone who is more familiar with that than the rest of us are in the communications team. And found in other school districts, many of them also have dedicated people. It may just be a coordinator or a paralegal or something like that. And then with the county, obviously, they have a couple of people that are dedicated just solely just to public records requests, but they have a team of 45 that work with various different departments to be able to fulfill requests as well. Again, they go to the content experts to be able to do that. So, yes, something like that is certainly something that we can look into and certainly would recommend and suggest.
I think this is good timing too, because as we move to, you know, we're in December, we're going to go on break, and then we're in January, we're certainly going to be talking about the budget process. And so, this is one of the things, as we listen to you today, what does that look like? That's something we want to bring through that budget process so you can analyze what those priorities are.
The clerk of the court has four or five people that she hires from 6 o'clock, no, 5 o'clock till 9 o'clock every five days a week, just to, I got you, just to do that redaction. And we have one person and not even a dedicated person.
We have a part of a person.
Exactly. Not sufficient. Bridgette?
Thank you. Well, and thank you for this. This is, and I know I've said this to you, but then it predates you. Public records have been something I've been concerned about since coming on the board, and it's definitely a challenge, I think, all school boards face across the state. If you talk about the county, they have, I mean, their volume of public records is astronomical compared to ours, but we also have the unique components because we're in a K-12 environment, and so our redaction process is more sensitive, obviously. And so, I've certainly spoken to our council about this over the course of some years, and I know there's a couple of different things that we have to weigh as far as not exposing further to releasing, you know, sensitive information. That's certainly there as a priority. But how do we manage this from, you know, transparently and responding expeditiously and subsequently? As I've had conversations with members of staff, and it is interesting that there are, there isn't, while we have this chart, it can, it comes in through communications and then can go to another department, and then that can kind of hold up for whatever reason. And so, whatever we look, looking forward as to what this is, making sure that person not only has the knowledge, but the wherewithal to push that along, I mean, having that and being empowered to do that, so, because it's outside of their department, and there's a myriad of things. The other thing that I think would be helpful is, and I have spoken with other districts, and again, this is something is commonly struggled with, but it was, and I've asked this question, is there a software? Because what I don't want is the perception, this may, I mean, I think there's a lot deeper elements that complicate the realities of responding to public records. But I remember asking people who previously worked in the department, like, how do we calculate this? Because you would get an email or you'd get a public records request, and it's huge, but, and then it would be, you know, plus $10,000. And I mean, I don't know a number, a member of general public would, depending on what their scenario is, but would be able to pay that, and we certainly don't want to appear that we're utilizing it to deter to respond. And so, is there a way that we can more narrowly articulate what they're looking for without leading them? Because that also creates some problems for us in that sense. So, I think there's a lot of work to be done, but I do think that having a champion or a team that can truly respond to it, because if you read the laws as far as public records, it's ambiguous at best, but it says reasonable time. And so, I believe that, you know, almost all the time, there are people truly trying to fulfill them, but having a better transparent process as to what that looks like. I know there's a reference to the Q and what have you, and that's trying to manage it. And again, knowing that there's only been really a half a person, as you said, that's running point on it. You know, one thing that I've thought through over some time is whether or not we could put, you know, post or have somewhere where we have a log of our current public records requests. Where are their current statuses? Have they been paid? Are they open? When the date was? And then, just again, and I think just to bring in the various teams, and that, whoever takes this position or that team would empower them because all of us could access it, look at it, and say, what's the holdup? So, because I think there are questions about what's going on with this public records request. Merely just responding to that takes more time away from responding to it. And so, I am very cognizant that there are a number of moving parts and trying to figure out what that looks like. But my biggest thing is making sure that it's being done fairly objectively, as I said, expeditiously, and in accordance with all of the laws, and making sure that we can do it as transparent as possible. I mean, the fact that a fulfilled public record in itself is a public record. So, is there a way, again, to not hurt more resources and time if somebody asks for something that's already been fulfilled? Is there an easier way for them to access that? So, those are some of my thoughts.
Exactly. Thank you.
Maybe this is this young man's question, but she was talking about software, and I believe that there's Florida statute 237, and then there's a, the entity that the Department of State of DMS pummels the rules having to do with that issue. And in those rules, it requires that when you buy a software program, that you take into account the ability to, for redaction and retrieving for public records. Are we doing such process when we acquire new software? Are we? What we're supposed to, according to the rules, we're supposed to take into consideration the ability of the software to fulfill public records requests more efficiently. I can give you the actual rule if you want.
So, when we do take in new software, we do go through a rubric to make sure that it's meeting the necessary guidelines. We haven't taken in any new archiving software that would deal with email for redaction purposes at any time recently, so.
So, but when we do, would we?
Well, obviously, yes.
Okay. My other concern is equality of people doing public records requests. Trey says, you know, I know firsthand some of the public records requests. Things that I didn't think were public records requests apparently became public records requests. And then I hear from people in the public, different stories of ease versus having to pay. I had a situation that you're aware of, that I asked the superintendent something that was on the agenda item, asking him, you know, what this was about, and he told me no reason. And then I asked him a follow-up question, and it ended up being $1,600. And so, for a board member to ask for something having to do on their board agenda and getting a bill for $1,600, so then when I hear from people in the public that they're getting astronomical bills for when they ask questions, it kind of gives validity to me when they say that, because I know that I'm being asked that. But then I hear from other people who, for whatever, for obvious reasons, don't have to pay for things. And so, I just want to make sure that there's equality amongst people and that people's motives are not taken into account when people are making public records requests.
Yes.
Because apparently, it appears that there are, and I can give you specific examples, but I'd rather not to do that in public.
Sure. Well, I will tell you that probably on average, most of the public records requests, if there is a cost and expense involved in it, is maybe about $60. So, it's not thousands and thousands of dollars. $60 is about the average and about the norm to do a few hours' worth of work. Again, we don't typically charge anybody unless we've spent over an hour of staff's time to be able to do that. And in some cases, again, one project in particular took us four months to be able to fulfill, so that was quite lengthy. But again, that's not the norm.
But also, I think when people ask for emails between Ms. Beaker and Jody Dumas, Mr. Dumas, I don't reasonably expect there to be any redacted material in that type of question. While an email between Allison Foster and Dr. Kingsley, I would expect the high risk of being things that need to be redacted. And so, sometimes, sometimes when I get, you know, bills, it's like, why in God's green earth would there be anything that needed to be redacted? And that's why I end up, the $1,600 bill ended up getting tossed out because it was ridiculous because there was no reason for them to be redacted. By the way, I've still never gotten that public records request. So, do we, no, I have not. My question is, is do we take that into account, the riskiness of the situation of an email going between Trey Beaker and Jody Dumas, the chances of student information versus Dr. Kingsley and Allison Foster? Now, I'm just taking people at random, obviously.
Sure. And we still have an obligation to make sure that every email does not contain student record. So, even though you would assume that I probably am not going to necessarily have an email dealing with a student, I very well may, especially if I'm talking to Jody on safety and security or Steve Cantis as an example.
Tracy Beaker, you're the actual person who created the email, so you would have a good idea whether you actually did that or not.
It depends on, again, what the request is and whether or not they're looking for specific information that we can help filter out. Otherwise, if we can't help filter things out, then the team still has to review things.
But you have reasonable expectation that Tracy Beaker would know what's in Tracy Beaker's emails versus you know in between Allison Foster and Dr. Kingsley?
And in some cases, I'm not pulling that information. The IT department is, and it's going through Caroline. So, again, it really all depends, Eric.
And I think some of the things, and I wrote it down a couple of times, but if we create some viewability into the process, then I think that if everybody has the ability to look at what's out there, what's pending, what's the potential cost on all of this, then I think that takes care of your concerns of what the charges are and is, are things fair and equitable? Because you could get any time, go in there and take a look at what's pending for us. And I think we can easily do that with some of the software packages we already have. I think that'd be a great step in the right direction to kind of supplement our current process.
Yeah. We just use Outlook right now, but I know, as an example, Lee County is in the process of retaining GovQA, which I believe is the same software that the county uses as well. And again, there is still a manual process. In some cases, it doesn't have redaction software. That has to be an addendum to that particular software. So, they're going to actually share with us what their best practices are with regards to going through this process and whether or not this is something for our school district to consider. So, again, the more that we can learn from other school districts in terms of what they use, because right now, it is still manual. It's an Excel spreadsheet, and then from there, the process itself is still fairly manual. But at least if GovQA or other software can help us to be able to manage the process better, then certainly, we want to take a look at that. And it's not only just public records requests. We can use that anytime a parent happens to make a request for a student file or an employee file or anything else that's made, that needs to be traced and that sort of thing as well. So, there could be other uses for this software beyond just public records requests.
Well, I think you hit the nail on the head, Jody. I think that that, I mean, because again, even myself having concerns about it and having talked through with different members of staff and understanding kind of that delay, I mean, I only know the ones that I've been made aware of, but understanding that some are very much more complex. And from a liability standpoint, I don't want us accidentally releasing anything, but I've always said, there has to be some kind of software out there that can do the redaction. Now, that doesn't mean that we're not going to do the human component to it as well, but even when you go to, you know, quantify what that estimate is, the likelihood of these individuals and what their security, I mean, I'm just going to use security clearance, but the likelihood that they're involved with any student records or personnel records, because that's another one we don't want to have, you know, released unless it's been properly redacted. But again, just trying to think of ways to streamline it. But I think the transparency piece is going to help us in a lot of ways, a significant way, and then we can improve upon it from there on.
Shirley.
You touched on it too, Bridgette, but I have concerns about relying on any program to do redaction because, I mean, how does a program know to redact Shirley Brown, a student, versus Shirley Brown, the school board member? Or, you know, if somebody spelled the name L-Y instead of L-E-Y, you know? I have concerns about totally relying on any program, any program to accurately redact information. I mean, it might overredact or skip a name because it was misspelled or something. So, I mean, I don't think just having a program is going to take care of it. I mean, redacting records is redacting records, and if you're asking for thousands of records, it's going to take a lot of time to get that unless you can narrow down what it is you're asking for.
That's correct. And speaking with several school districts and also with the county, that redaction process is still has to be a manual process because you're absolutely right. I don't know whether Steve Smith happens to be an employee or whether Steve Smith happens to be a student. So, based on that, and the computer will not ever find that out, so there still has to be that manual human touch. But beyond that, though, at least it can manage the process of it so that people, everyone can have access to the system and see where those processes are. For the most part, we don't normally share out in terms of all the different requests that we get, and if that's something that we need to consider doing, then absolutely we should. I think anytime we have a records request pertaining to a specific employee, we typically would let that employee know that a request has been made. But for the most part, again, the more that we can be transparent in all the things that we're doing, the tenure, the how much time it takes to be able to fulfill a records request, what the costs truly are, those types of things, we certainly want to take a look at that.
Thank you. Any other?
I'll be brief. I'm sorry, and I won't beat this to a dead horse, but you brought something up, and I'm glad you did, is making, especially, I mean, I think we're in the public eye, so we're used to public records requests, but there's a couple of different scenarios from a legality standpoint, which again, is why I think that transparency piece will help. But if any member of staff from board all the way down is included in a public records request, not only is it something that would be, you know, oftentimes, most of the time, something that internally we can grab, but there may be things that would not be, and then in accordance to be in compliance, it's important that those people be aware that they were part of this request. What is that request? So that if there is anything outside of what's able to be grabbed internally via IT or various departments, that they be aware. I think that from a, like, I guess normally, but I think it should be always so that people can, to be fair, that they know, but two, that they can comply and provide that information because the last thing you want it to look like is that you purposely didn't try to, but if you weren't aware that you were even a subject of it, makes it challenging to, you know, properly respond.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thanks for your feedback.
Thank you.
Next is proposals for equity policy review. Art Hardy and Carol Layton.
Good morning.
Good morning.
At the last workshop, the board had conversation about looking for information so that it could hire an outside entity to conduct a review of, I'll use the shorthand, equity policies, procedures, and training. Ms. LaShawn did really yeoman's work. I want to credit her and her department for getting, I'm not sure what it was ultimately called, but a request for information and other things out on the street right before Thanksgiving. And I know they not only put it out and put it on DemandStar, but made lots of calls to companies, entities that they knew might have some interest in this, trying to cast as wide a net as possible in a very short timeframe, because we asked for responses to come in last Thursday, I believe, the 5th. Because we asked for responses to come in last Thursday, I believe, the 5th. So especially given, there was about 10 days, and given that Thanksgiving intervened, there really wasn't a lot of time to get this information together. But a lot of hard work from her staff and from her personally. And we've gotten these 14 responses that you've got. And frankly, not like I do a lot of this, but I was surprised to have 14 responses. You know, and to be fair to the groups that responded, we were reasonably nebulous about what we wanted, I mean, and gave them a short period of time to respond. So they can't come in with hard and fast proposals like we sometimes get. But I think you got a fair amount of background information on these companies. So we were charged with getting that for you, we have, and now here we are, waiting to get further direction.
Who would like to start this discussion? Bridget?
I appreciate it. I was also surprised and enthused that we had that many, but then it comes down to, okay, well, how do we properly evaluate this fairly and make a decision? And the whole, one of the things that, the irony in that is that I didn't want it to take a long time. But we also need to make sure that we kind of have some direction on how we want, as a board, to weight this and make that selection essentially. And there was, in my personal opinion, when I read through it, there is a wide range of expertise. I think you hit the nail on the head. Some were very generic, some had more specified information, some have experience with other school districts, some have a wider net and addressed as to why that was relevant, as to what maybe we would be addressing. Some have experience with already working with our school districts. So because I don't have a matrix, but I do want to make sure we're fair here, I actually would defer to the three of you as to what you believe is the, hearing from the board, but because we have 14 and not trying to just randomly select them, what recommendations do you have at that point to be fair and balanced, or maybe other board members?
Well, I chatted with Carol, and I also chatted with Roy and Al Hareda yesterday, and I asked them what their opinion or input might be as well. And I think that it's important to get Al's opinion. Hi, Al. But, I mean, any of these people could do it, yeah, at 142,000 or much less. And I was surprised with 142,000 with $38,000 in travel when they're in Kissimmee. That was a little concerning. I thought that would have been one of the ones I really liked because they're in Kissimmee, and we could just, you know, shuttle them over here. Because the travel part will always get you on these things. So I was particularly interested in that, in their rate sheet. But I would like to hear some comments. Carol, I know you made some phone calls. There were some that professed to have school experience and maybe didn't.
Well, I went through every packet and detailed what experience they had. I thought you were looking for school experience specifically and post-secondary. Very few had both. So I don't know what criteria you're interested in looking at as your number one. So that's why it's presented this way, for the board to make the decision. I don't want to sway you one way or the other.
Well, yeah, let me jump in briefly. You know, obviously, this is the board's decision, properly so, as to go down this route in the first place, although I think it's wise. And then we have focused in the last two weeks on getting the information. We frankly haven't, at least I haven't. I've read it, but I haven't analyzed it carefully. And Carol raises the good point. We can do that, if that's what the board wishes us to do, but we also need the criteria on which you want us to look at this. Obviously, the education, K-12, post-secondary experience is a part of it. Unlike a lot of purchasing decisions, we don't really even have price to compare here because we don't know what the exact scope is. We can draw some conclusions perhaps from the rate sheets, but I think at this point, we, meaning myself and the staff, have just tried to get the information to you. Because this is not a, this is a professional service. You could just say, you know what, we've read through these, and as a board, we like number whatever, you know, such the ABC company, and you could just authorize us to go negotiate a contract with them today. To bring back a contract, obviously. So it could be that streamlined if you want it. If you want the staff input on things, which of course you can accept or reject, then we're going to have to go back and review things to bring you either a shortlist or recommendations. But that then, of course, pushes us to January, which, you know, is okay. I just want the board to be aware of that, so.
One of the things I did, already going through this, is that I rated each one of the companies on a sheet. I rated them on the... And so I can go through here and tell you which ones I think are good and have the necessary material that we are interested in. So I don't know if anybody else has done that same thing.
I did preliminary rating, but then again, I wanted to get a hearback from, because it was, to be fair, again, it was broad, what, it was quick. I mean, financial is going to be one of the big ones, what's embedded and what's not direct, so indirect and direct costs. So those, as Jane said, rightfully so, those can go very, very high, very quick. Being cognizant of some direction as to what that scope may be, but not knowing. And then I think that the experience in government work or post-secondary, I think they had a broader sense of the complexities that we are finding ourselves facing as well. So I didn't find many with K-12, quite frankly, that really had the breadth of where I think would be valuable. And I don't want to go through the process and find ourselves no further along, if you will, so.
What I was thinking is that if all of us came up with a list of ones that we would, that we think are qualified, and then we can put that list together and then have staff do further analysis on that, if you're ready to do that today.
There could be ones that you guys have automatically just dismissed as not, you don't want to look at any further at those individual companies. And so that could narrow the scope of the companies that we have to then determine whether or not you want to even consider looking at more. It's totally your call, but...
Like, one has 18 months' experience, another one has one year' experience, so I've already eliminated those. Shirley.
Some of my concern is going outside, I think what is normally my comfort zone when we do a policy. To hand this off, to have somebody else do it and come up with it, you know, on their own. I mean, we saw the last time we were looking at this policy, it took a lot of discussion versus... Because I think what's unique about our policy, our policy will not only be about staff on staff, you know, or administrator against assistance or whatever, but it's also student on students, student on teacher, teacher on student. I mean, so it's a bigger picture than some of these others. And the bottom line is it really isn't as much what the wording is, but is the practice and how you deal with it. I was particularly looking at these things when I was at FSBA last week, and there, I believe it was Lee County, you know, they set up their own department, and it was even more towards the students, and a lot of it had to do with the LGBT stuff and all of that. But, you know, when you get to sexual harassment, bullying, it's all kind of the same in some instances, whether it's the student or the adult. I mean, it gets in there. But, you know, they not only came up with, you know, policies, but they had the procedures, and they then set up classes that they had that even the board attended. I mean, that, you know, so I'm thinking, I'm concerned about going outside and reinventing the wheel when perhaps our HR department would be better off contacting the HR departments of the school districts. I'm sure, doesn't HR have a group of associates, just like school boards, associate district superintendents? I mean, I don't know why we wouldn't reach out, have our HR people reach out to them, and then have, what we could do, a public meeting where we're talking about how we're going to change or what other procedure... Because it's not just the policy, it's the procedure. Because we want to make sure that at every place, every office, every school, there's a place where somebody, an employee, can file a complaint, or a student knows how to file a complaint, and everyone knows what that procedure is, and that the forms are there, and everything is going to work totally. And I would like to see perhaps what other districts have run into and how they've solved it. Rather than going out to somebody who doesn't really deal with students, because we're not talking about a hiring practice or redoing our HR, we're talking about a specific instance and the specific policy we're looking at writing. I mean, right? We're not looking at changing HR department, we're looking at...
Reviewing.
And the training.
Right. And some of these, I think our HR department is...
But I think the training comes after the policy.
Yes, it does. But I don't think our HR department is up to doing this.
I agree.
They are short-staffed. I mean, I just don't think so.
Well, I'd still like to see what other districts, school districts do.
We tried doing this ourselves, all of us, and rewrote it and went back and went back. I'm at a point where I would like to see a company come in and take over the developments of the policy, the training of the people, because it has to be more than giving someone a piece of paper and saying, sign this, this means you understand what is happening. And you don't. Because, like, I talked to someone, they had no idea that they were working in a hostile environment. So you have to have actual training, not pieces of paper or videos to watch. So I don't think we're staffed to do that.
Or the expertise. And there's a whole world of best practices, that's what we're looking for. And yes, they could come back to us, and that's where our job is. Scope, time, and expertise. I personally think perhaps we could identify three or four main points that drive this, and then ask your staff to go through it, and then shortlist it, and we move forward, and that way it's fair. I do believe we're in a, it's no surprise to anyone else, we're in a lot of transition as an organization right now. And I'm very, very pleased to see that this is something we all agree is a priority. So recognizing that it would take staff at some point as we work through this, so having them part of it, but really being driven by the board as we kind of solidify, I think, is a key part.
I got you. It'll be responsive.
Yeah.
That's why I suggested that we identify three or four, instead of having them interview and work with 11 or 14 of them. That we narrow it down and then have staff work with them.
Either way, I think shortlisting is getting to that, that's my goal.
That's exactly what I'm talking about, Bridget, shortlisting. Eric?
Yeah, I kind of agree with both of you that it's probably too much for HR to do on themselves, and we do need some level of expertise. But I agree with Ms. Brown, at the end of the day, the buck stops with the five of us, and we can't delegate that to somebody else. I mean, it's, the issue comes to us. But Madam Chair, is it possible to, since we're going to be looking through this, and is it possible to have Al come up here and maybe give some guidance of the process when the board's looking through these various potential vendors? Should give us some shortcomings we should look for, some potholes, some things to keep in mind?
No potholes.
No potholes. You know, things to swerve around, that's what I meant.
So I think you talked about, Jane, about, or maybe it was Shirley, about Lee County and the contact that I have in Lee County, and how they do theirs, that they do have a department, they have, I believe, three. But they have also, with that, encompassed the investigator, like we were authorized last year, the investigator, and they actually go in and they handle all situations in the schools. And they do all the investigations for the entire county. So, and I think it might be more than three people, but it's not a lot of people, but they focus on, the way that their director there, Andy Brown, he explains it to me, is they focus on any type of concerns or complaints that could impact the district as a whole. So if it's an individual thing that's going on in the school, the school principals and the way that we still do it, would handle those kinds of situations. But that they would go in and handle anything that could impact a district as a whole. So that's how they do it there. There are some other districts that I know, and I'm actually leaving this afternoon for the Equity Conference in Orlando, but so I might have more information for you.
You want to drop by Kissimmee?
When I get back. But they, there are some other districts who I believe, like, I believe Hillsborough, you know, they were under some sanctions, so they have an entire department that actually has a lawyer attached to and some of those kind of things. And so I would say, looking at, if we're looking at companies, one of the things that I looked at and hear, and I know that we kind of just threw out some of the things that we are looking for, but my concern, I hear us talking, was that we were talking about the training piece of it, and I didn't see a whole lot of that. There was a lot of policy development, procedure development assisting us with that. I think one of our big things is what Caroline just said, is, you know, we don't train our staff, we don't train them on how to identify, and we do give them the annual updates and make sure that you understand this is our discrimination policy and procedures, and how to report, and they sign it, and it goes into their site file. And I send out a video at the beginning of every school year, a PowerPoint that tells them a little bit about it. But I think that when we're looking at any of these organizations, we definitely need to narrow down on how are we going to train our over 5,000 staff and continue that training. If we use an outside agency, we got to figure out how we're going to continue that training for our new hires and other people involved. Yes, Shirley?
Oh, it could be that a company comes in and trains the trainer, use that type of a model.
Correct.
Yeah, for sure.
Shirley.
I would really like to hear, you know, what you get at that Equity Conference, and I'm sure when you're at that Equity Conference, you'll be asking some of these things. And I would like to hear, because I know, you know, maybe what we need, instead of an agency, is maybe we need an employee that is highly versed in this, that, because we can't hire somebody and get it done and be over with. It's this ongoing training, and the gal that presented from Lee County, you know, she had these, you know, I think it was over three years, these are the lessons that we have to, and it was like, all staff was taking this, and they also were going in and working with the students too, because it isn't just staff, it's the students. And then one thing that they, one school did, she didn't do it, the school did it, because they started with their gay-straight alliance, you know, because of the bullying and the harassment. And they ended up finding that they expanded that, and the students did it themselves. It was no longer a gay-straight alliance, it was a unity alliance, because they brought in other kids that were being bullied, students with handicaps, students that didn't speak English, or students that were just fine, you know, that wanted to come in and help. And what they were doing was, and the amount of complaints, the amount of harassment and bullying dropped considerably when they had this. So, I mean, I think that we need to make it like more than, you know, not just the past incident we had, but make it an overreaching thing for not just employees, but for students too. And I think perhaps rather than hiring a firm, we look at hiring an employee that specifically helps us on these policies and these procedures and the training. I mean, if we have somebody that specifically looks at that.
So, did we just go through an exercise in fertility of reading all of these corporations that applied, and now we're going to do it ourselves?
Well, you know, I think it's...
That's why I'm hearing from you.
That's what I would like to see, because I think on the long range, that's a better option. And I think it's better that we bring this up now and make this decision now, rather than that we continue this and we might spend $142,000 or maybe $7,000, I don't know what it would be. But I think we also need to make sure that when we're making these policies, that we have, you know, a public input on what we're proposing and what we're doing, that somebody just doesn't bring us a finished product. I have a concern about that, because that's what happened with, I forgot what Norris called his plan, you know, but he went away and he brought it, and here it is. That kind of bothers me about just turning it over to somebody, because I think it has to be something that we incorporate, and it's part of our makeup of how we do this.
I agree, Shirley, but I also am aware that there's also a time constraint. How long would it take us to hire someone and train them?
We don't even know what we're looking for. I mean, that's the other thing, the expertise of what we're looking for. And I think in the long term of implementation, sure, that's phase two. But, I mean, we're talking about a broad, and you brought that up, I mean, are we talking student and student, are we talking employee? I think we have a new law enforcement agency, so there's a couple of things, but we have to be careful so we don't say, we want you to research all this and bring back recommendations. So I think it's step one, but this is certainly, I mean, the cost, indirect, direct, what have you, is certainly, we know we need to do this. And I think... And I think maybe in the, for sustainment, yeah, you would look at having, you know, hiring that person, but you need an expert to tell, I mean, we aren't getting this right at the end of the day. We're just not, so.
We've wasted a lot, unfortunately, I use the word, we've wasted a lot of time, and we seem to be spinning our wheels right now, and I don't want to do that.
Yep.
I just wanted to point out, and I think you've said it, is the issues you're all bringing up are not mutually exclusive. This isn't necessarily an either or. You could bring someone in to work with the board, not to impose on the board, for sure, to work with the board, to come up with policies, procedures, training, and you'd have to discuss what that training looked like, and it might be a train the trainer. But you're right, just having the good piece of paper is not enough. You then may have to talk about, how do we sustain this? That's, that's something you accomplish over the next six months, or however long, to get that in place. But then you may need to talk about, and I'm not familiar with the Lee County model, but maybe you want to look at that or some similar kind of model, so that you have, we're now hiring a lot of employees between public records and equity, but they're both important. And it both can be an investment in the sense of, not only do you want to do the right thing, but you're also potentially long-term saving money by decreasing your liability on both fronts. So, but, but one of the things I would think that if you brought a group in, they would give you advice on, at least, is what should you look like a year from now? After we leave and we give you all this great training, how do you make sure this wasn't just a one-shot deal?
Right. Jane?
Yeah.
Jane.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you said Shirley.
Jane?
No. I'm trying to be nice to you, darling. No, I was going to say that I can get my four together right now. And I may only have three. I'm not sure about MGT. MGT, if that's the MGT that worked with us in the past, I thought they were sold to a company in Indiana, and we're now working with our old favorite education commissioner, Tony Bennett.
Tony Bennett.
But I'm not sure if this group in Tallahassee is, you know, is spun off from that. But I think that's the organization that did our 2012...
They did.
...operations event. So at any rate, I can, I could do three or four, but I think, I think there's some merit in doing all of this. I would really be interested in what you learn and hear from this Equity Conference, because I think that's really important to how we go along, Al. So I'd encourage you to bring some information back and best practices back and what you see others. You know, Lee County is doing a lot of things really well, and they're to our south. I have good friends in Lee County. They're about double the size of us. So if they have an apartment of three, they have 90,000 students, that gives you an idea of how that goes. But I would love to get information and input back from, from what you see happening. And we did get some really good overview of some things that are going on in the state last week. And then we had our wonderful ethics training, which is always a wonderful experience, always wonderful. But I would like that, and then I'd like to come up with the four, and then I'd say, let's, let's try to get those folks in and see, and see where we are, because I think they would maybe help us to see if our best practices, what kinds of things we need to do, what they see globally. And I think it's important to see what school districts are doing, but I also think it's good to see what's best practice in other industries as well, because, you know, we have to make sure that we are all over this issue and that we're handling it well, and everybody in our doors and everyone that works at the school district understands what to do in any situation that involves harassment.
And I don't think we can put this off. Mitzi?
So, so if it's the will of the board, if we could shortlist it, then we'd be more than happy to contact these particular vendors, maybe even have them come in to present to you at the next workshop, maybe, if we have a smaller list. I do think it's imperative that we kind of seek outside best practice expertise in trying to figure out where we are a year from now and how we should look. Poor Al is a party of one, and so it's...
And he's not much of a party. He's just not good at parties.
Oh, no. Never seen him at a party.
It may look like there needs to be additional staff to support that particular, you know, it's, we've got 5,000 employees, 43,000 students. It's a, you know, so I think that moving forward, we may have to look at that, but it would be nice to get an expert's opinion on how they may see it should look moving forward, so.
So how would you like to do this? Would you like to, right now, choose four companies? Or do you want to put a list together and give it to Art and Carol later today? How would you want to do this?
I know. There's 14. Nobody, I don't think any of us thought we would get 14 responses, which is wonderful. It's just a lot.
11 o'clock last night is when I finished.
Yeah, it was a lot. So, I mean, if we have a consensus, I mean, we don't know, you guys haven't said anything, but if we have kind of a consensus of a number of individuals, we can move forward and have them ready for January.
I think that'd be a great idea. What do you, what do you all think?
I'll agree that if this person is going to talk to Al and Al is going to go to this Equity Conference, bring some ideas back, and we kind of work together on it, and looking at the future and perhaps hiring someone, I would go along with that then.
Jane?
I got my four.
Okay. Eric?
I want to have now.
What do you want to hear from Al?
I want to talk to Al about...
I don't know about... Bridgette? Where are you?
I'd like to hear, because that's what I know if it made sense.
That's why I'm curious to hear what others thought. I mean, this is not in a silo, and that's why I didn't know if it made, from a fair and balanced, also in a public meeting, you know, what that direction looked like. But I think narrowing down to four would be a great start, how we do that.
We can do it here right now.
All right.
Or we can hand it to Al's, no, Al's leaving, so we hand it to Carol.
Well, I mean, all of, all of this is public, public record, so there's no reason not to discuss it. If people have thoughts, give their thoughts, and we're moving ahead.
So, how about accelerated partners? This is what I'll do. I'll call them out. You can tell me yea or nay, and I'll write them down.
I was concerned about the time in which they've been in...
Well, let's do it quick.
Yeah.
Will you do it quick?
So, yeah, I suggest you just go down the list, and if people are interested in learning more about them, speak up. If not, we'll move on.
And my worry with them was their time in existence.
I agree.
Okay. That was my, that was a no for me.
Okay. Aaron's Consulting. Aaron's, the second one.
Yeah, we already...
Yeah, she only got two.
I did that one.
Go ahead.
I did that one.
Did you? Yes?
Art?
So, I think what we're going to do, let's make sure we all understand what it is we're doing, is Caroline's going to go down the list. If someone wants to keep an organization in the mix, speak up.
Okay.
If not, we'll just move to the next, and...
Okay.
So, the first one was accelerated...
Okay, you want me to start with accelerated partners? Hearing none?
Hearing none.
Aaron's Consulting. Urban Schools.
Hearing none.
CPS HR Consulting.
Diane Mueller and Associates.
Yes.
Yes, I said yes, too. That's funny.
Was that the one?
Yeah.
Look at their training.
Anybody else? Anybody else?
Yeah.
I got two.
Yeah, I have two.
I need to hear from...
Three. I'm fine. I'm trying to find my notes here. That one did not, there were a couple that stood out that I was kind of DQ'd, and I'm not speaking about them, so I'm being quiet.
Okay. Eric?
I'm just being quiet.
Well, come on, gosh, you got to give me input if you want...
They're saying no. If they're not saying anything, then they're saying no.
All right, so, all right.
Be quiet if we don't.
Okay.
Is that not what we're doing?
No. See, Bridgette was quiet, and she's okay with them.
Okay, so it's four.
I'm quiet because no.
Okay, so there's four.
Okay.
Okay, EEO?
EEO Consultants, Inc.
No.
Hearing none? HRM Consulting?
Yes.
I say yes also, so. Anybody else?
Okay with that one as well.
Three. The Knoll Group?
Yes.
Yes.
I said no, but that's okay. I'll go with that. I don't remember why I said no. L&amp;M Consulting LLC. Landrum HR. MGT of America Consulting? Operations, Inc. Revelation Global Consulting?
Yes.
Yes. I had a question.
I said no on that one.
You had a question, Mark?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, that's okay. I think cashing it out with it.
There was no, I just know that I had it marked, so.
I have marked it no, so, but I can't go back and get it.
Parts of benefit.
Riesling Group? The Riesling Group? Gray Robinson?
No relation.
Sorry.
I marked them as a law in lobbying for more than a policymaking firm.
It is a law firm in Orlando.
I know.
They kind of do a lot of this stuff.
All right, so what we have, what we have is three. HRM, Kroll, MGT, and Revelation Global, four.
Diane Mueller.
I had five listed that people, at least some people said yes to.
Oh, Diane, I missed Diane Mueller.
I had three on HRM. So I have four for Diane Mueller. I had three for HRM Consulting, five for Kroll Group, two for MGT, and two for Revelation. Does that sound right?
Diane Mueller, you had how many?
Four.
I had four for Kroll Group. I think Caroline said no.
I think she said she was okay. So you're no on Kroll Group?
Yes, I'm no.
Okay, so it's four.
So, so the question is of, now, I think we're, we're at least down to those five.
Do we want to narrow that group further for us to get further information, or perhaps to ask them either in person or by phone, depending perhaps on where they are?
Yes.
All right. Here, here are the ones that received votes. Diane Mueller and Associates, HRM Consulting, Kroll Group, MGT of America Consulting, Revelation Global Consulting. Those are the ones I heard at least some level of yes to.
I suggest we explore the ones who've got four votes.
Four more.
Four more.
So Diane Mueller and Kroll.
So it's only Diane and Kroll?
That got four. HRM received three.
Maybe three or more.
Yeah, I would keep HRM.
The other I have were two, MGT and Revelation.
Three is a majority, that's fine. Three...
Yeah, I think, then I think you're right to expand to three, and that's the Diane, I'm not sure if I'm saying it right, Mueller.
You are.
Was it HRM?
HRM and Kroll.
And then Kroll.
Mm-hmm.
Three.
Three, three groups.
I think that's a good shortlist.
All right, now, now, that's good. We've narrowed the field. The question is, what do you want us to do with that information?
All the work.
Bridgette? I think we should narrow down a couple key items that, for them to present on, because that, one of my biggest concerns is this realm being, and I'm, again, glad that we know we need some support, but it could be wide and vast, and so being narrow as to what they could speak to. Certainly, any firms, when they respond to certain things, they identify other areas that they specialize in, but, so that we're aware, great. But right now, I think that we kind of need to narrow down into what it is we're looking. I think you articulated it perfectly. It's just a review of, you know, policy and procedures, and then the training, and then how you, how that, what that sustainability is to move us forward from, so that we're not necessarily always outsourcing it, you know? Does that sound agreeable?
Yep.
And perhaps, because I think Shirley raised a great point, is that when we, equity is such a very broad word, but, you know, that we are looking at policy and procedures from certainly the employee standpoint, the human relations standpoint, but that is, human relations not exclusive to employees. It's certainly our engagement with our students and what have you. And so I think that the embedding, some of them having, you know, I think right now we have some separate policies and some are the same. So I think it would be prudent if we're going through this exercise that they would be looking at both the employee side of it and the student side of it.
And the training.
And the training. Now, the training from the student side is a very different conversation, but I'd be curi, I mean, it's a curriculum conversation, in my opinion, but, you know, we don't operate in silos, so that would be my recommendation from a starting point.
Any other comments? Time limit that you want to have for the presentations? Do you want us to, you know, when we contact them, they would like a 10-minute presentation, 20-minute? I'm just trying to be mindful of your time in January at the workshop.
And theirs, to know how in-depth...
Well, that's right, and that's going to depend on, when we tell them kind of a scope of whether or not they're going to want to continue to proceed and even go and pitch.
And I think, because I'm just looking here, the organizations, according to our grid here, are from Orlando, that's relatively easy, but California and Pennsylvania. So I was just inquiring of Mr. Dumas, do we have the capability to do video conferencing? That may be, may be a reasonable way to proceed.
Or perhaps maybe even if they just do something in a letter, or...
I was going to say, maybe they should come. I mean, if we're going to, this, I think an in-person presentation is...
If they're in California, they don't have people here. They're not going to be able to do that.
That's right. And I think we need to know that right off the bat, I think, on both. They may be headquartered there, they may have offices everywhere.
There's one in here that's someplace, Florida, remote, but they have a staff person in Florida.
Right, well, these are, a lot of these are national.
And I think, but I would, I personally would like to have, and I think that would be beneficial to the board too, is to have a, have a presentation. I don't think we need 45-minute, you know, presentations, but I don't know, I would ask you guys what you would, I mean, I only know what I see in my world as far. Things can go very long, but I think 30 minutes at a max is absolutely reasonable.
Including questions? Including questions?
Yes.
So you'd want them to maybe limited 10 to 15 to 20 minutes or something, and then 10 minutes for each?
And what are we looking at? Are we looking at the board workshop in January?
If there's just three, if they're, I mean, it's a month, more than a month, actually.
Risk assessment folks in.
Yeah, good timing.
Yeah.
What if one or more of these come back to us and they can't? I mean, I'd like to have at least three to look at, so...
We have four.
We have three.
Oh, we have three, I'm sorry. We have three.[1645.52]
Okay, so if one bows out, the backup would be?
Flip a coin for the people that choose.
I mean, how many, how many got twos?
Two.
Let's say if one bows out, flip a coin between one of the.
Revelation Global or MGT?
Yeah.
Opinion?
Can I say something about one of the companies?
Sure.
Revelation Global Consulting included presentation work from 2008 and 2009.
Oh, that's right.
Okay.
It's been a while, they didn't have anything.
Take them off.
Take them off the list.
Yeah, it was, it was interesting, it was like 10 years since they, you know, they included.
Okay, so if one of them doesn't come in, then we go to those other two and see if one of them would come, because now we're back into Florida?
We'll be back to MGT.
That would be MGT.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Is everybody all right?
Thank you.
Much easier than I thought. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Bring back lots of good information.
Thank you.
Moving right along to item three, discussion of the audit committee nominees. Shirley?
I nominated Thomas Nate. In fact, is he here today, Mr. Nate? He had spoken before the board when we were having our discussions with superintendent and all of that, and had past experience in a school district, I think he was the superintendent, and he sent a little bit about who he is, and those are added in there, and I had a resume from him. I think he would be a good balance on this, because of his expertise in running a school district, that he would make a great nominee for that position, so that's why. I don't know him personally, I just thought he handled himself well when he presented to the board, his opinion on what we were doing.
Okay. Who wants to go next?
I'll go next. And I will, I will just say that the Audit Committee in Manatee County is made up of all superintendents, retired superintendents, just as a sidebar. They've had an audit committee for several years. The person I nominated is Mike Pender, not Bender.
Did we fix that?
Who is a well-respected CPA in town. He is affiliated with Kavanaugh and Company, and has served various different leadership roles, both in the nonprofit world in Sarasota and Manatee County, as well as in the accounting and, and Accounting Board for the state.
President of the Florida Institute of Certified Public Accountants, Mike Pender was.
And, and I may say personally that I actually went to him just to get some input as to what his thoughts were, and he said, well, I would be willing to serve, so it kind of just, you know, hey, this is pretty good. But he also has served as treasurer of our Stakeholders' Organization for Referendums for the last 12 years or so. And he's always available and, you know, does a terrific job, so I thought he'd be a nice addition to the committee.
Bridget?
I put forward Sue Memminger. I know, I know, it's interesting, it's, I, I've been thinking about this audit committee for a very, very long time, and spoken with a number of people in Manatee who have, you know, they've established theirs, and trying to find what's a good makeup, ensuring that you have some diversification, but also some, some knowledge and wherewithal. So Sue Memminger is someone I have known recently, but I know that she's runs, her and her husband have run their own company, it's an accounting software inclusive of that. She's been very involved in our district, and I think she would be a great add.
Eric?
Well, my first question is to you, Ms. Zucker, is who you're going to appoint from the board from your position, and I just wanted to make the pitch for myself, is if you look at the five of us and look at who's the most qualified, I'm clearly the most qualified person. Ms. Brown put forward Mr. Nate, and I just realized he's a CPC-M. Guess what? So am I. I was a CPC-M. And at the lower designation, I'm a CAC-M, those are sort of professional contract manager, and CAC-M Certified Associate Contract Manager. I'm also Certified Purchasing Manager by the Institute of Supply Management. The time I got it, they were the National Association of Purchasing Managers. I was going to bring that up, except that I saw that Mr. Nate had it, and just wanted to point out that I had that same qualification. Ms. Goodwin brought up somebody who's CPA. Clearly, everybody knows, I have the designation of a CPA. Not only do I have the designation of CPA, I was also appointed to the Florida Board of Accountancy, which promulgates all the rules of all the CPAs in the state. One of the only few people in Sarasota Accounting ever to be appointed to that position. I also have a bachelor's and master's degree in related field of study, what we're discussing. I also have relevant experience. I not only am a practicing CPA, but also am the managing partner of a CPA firm, and actually hold the distinction of having more CPAs working for me than CPAs in the Sarasota School Board. So certainly I have the record, record, knowledge and expertise. I'm also the only person of the five of us who actually has the ability to actually do an audit, and has actually done an audit, has actually has the ability to do internal audit, and actually has done an internal audit. Even the, the people who came forward to, that we hired, don't even have that ability to do an audit, because they're not, none of them are CPAs. So if you were looking to hire somebody based upon qualifications, if I can recap, education, designations not directly related to accounting, but clearly are relevant, because Mr. Nate has them, designations that are directly relevant that I have, experience in, in accounting and auditing, clearly I have, and experience in also nonprofits, I've been the treasurer, you mentioned nonprofits, I've been the treasurer of the United Way, Habitat Humanity, Humane Society. And when you want to talk about size of organizations, I was also the finance chair for the Agency for Workforce Initiative, which is now Career Source, which budget actually, actually is, is bigger than the school district. At that time, it was $1.1 billion, and I was the finance chair. So I would hazard a guess that I am the most qualified person of the school board here. So I don't know if you can do it based upon qualifications.
So you're gonna put, you put yourself down as?
No, well, the question is, is who are you going to be?
I am.
So you're more qualified than me?
I have John Crainer as my, because I'm allowed to choose someone.
Correct, but you, but you also have to choose a board member.
And then, no, it says the chair.
Or the designee.
Or designee.
So my question is.
So I'm going to take it.
So you're not gonna?
You're gonna be on the board, because you're gonna put yourself on it.
Well, that, that's why I asked the question first, was were you gonna do it based upon qualifications? Because clearly I'm the most qualified.
You're talking about chair, I just wanted, you're.
Chair, yeah, yeah.
Cheering of the committee, right? That's where he was, okay.
Well, because we pick one board member.
Right.
You have the ability to pick one board member, you're picking yourself. My point was, I believe of the five of us, if you did it based upon qualifications, I'm the most qualified. I'm more qualified than you, I, I'm the most qualified person. But if you're, if you're not gonna base, base qualifications, then I'll put myself as the community member.
Okay.
Doesn't that cause a problem if we have a board member that's as a community member, then we have two board members on the?
No, because this is not, this is in the sunshine. This committee's in the sunshine. The only time it would be a problem if it, if we were not in the sunshine. Bridget?
Well, and that was, so, I wanted to make sure I understood, and so, and actually, I, when we went and did the policy, I remember when I changed, I'd asked that we change it to the chair or, and it says his or her designee, and I, in my mind, I was thinking, but it's what we ratified, I understand that, but was thinking that it would be something that the board would select the chair, who's gonna be our representative. So that's where we are, and so I didn't know who you were choosing, and so, is it you? Because I was going to, I personally was going to say that I agree with, I couldn't articulate it quite as well as you did, but thinking that, and that was something I'd brought up even when we were drafting the policy, but did say that we aren't making it about who's on this board, but it's more about wanting to have the right person with the right qualifications. So I would, I would like to see, I believe he substantiated that, but would, as far as chairing the, the committee as a CPA background, but if that's the case.
We have Mike Pender and, who else did we get? Thomas Nate, right.
Okay. Well, I was talking about the five of us, of the five of us.
You were talking about the five of us, but.
Not yet.
It's, it's the chair or the designee, and I am at the chair, so I am doing it.
Okay.
It's your priority.
And I've got a big folder I'll hand over to someone.
And you're, you're nominating John Crainer?
Yes.
Okay. You want us to tell the public a little bit about him, or?
Everybody knows John Crainer, he's the one that serves on our, our Financial Advisory Board, he's been involved with us with the referendum, every referendum we've passed. He comes to our meetings, he sits out in the audience, and he follows what's happening with the school system. So he's very knowledgeable and well-respected in the community. Okay. Mike Pender.
We have seven members, so we have to actually identify a seventh person.
Can I, can I put forward somebody? His name is Joe Bentley, he's the CFO of Freedom Boat Club.
I don't know him.
That's, I'm glad you brought it, so that seventh part, I mean, I see Art coming back there.
He's, he would be the CPA at large?
I'm, I'm just putting him up if somebody else has somebody else, but he, he's a CPA at large, he's a.
Wait until Jane comes back.
Yeah, wait until Jane comes back.
And I might ask Art, just because it's a, so it's our seventh person, and I know I'd asked, I said, what is our game plan for the CPA, and how do we find out?
He has, I have seven people, and I thought, here's five of us.
Yeah.
And then the chair, and Mitzi's on it.
But pursuant to law, she can't, she can't be a voting member.
The seventh person is supposed to be.
The identified CPA. We can have more than one CPA, but they're like the designated CPA.
I was also wondering if perhaps we could get a little diversity on the board. So far, we've got.
Two women?
White men and two white ladies.
But that was up to all of you.
I know.
So about selecting a CPA, I know that, so we have to have seven members, sounds like we're moving towards, although we have to adopt that today, this afternoon.
Your policy, right, your policy has the five community, the chair or designee, and then a Florida licensed CPA who must either be a resident of or practicing accountancy in Sarasota County. The nomination of the CPA member may be made by any school board member. If more than one qualified CPA member is nominated to serve on the committee, then the school board by majority vote of quorum present shall decide the CPA member who shall serve.
And so, Jane, I threw out a CPA member, a guy named Joe Bentley, his kids go to Venice High, he's the CFO of Freedom Boat Club. Freedom Boat Club? And so am I, but we each pick a community member.
So do you want to put Mike Pender as the CPA?
We can all decide who the others are.
We do either way, because we need seven, right?
Why do we need one other CPA? We don't?
It calls for one other CPA, but he's put.
It, it, it calls for seven members, and the five people have put our name forward, and we've got the chair, and then now we need a CPA, an additional CPA.
Which means only really one on the committee. I've read the law and the rules 100 times. One designee of the committee has to be a CPA.
Well, yes, under your policy, I mean, under the law, there only has to be a minimum of three members. You all have expanded that, which is fine, because you've got more than three. I mean, theoretically, everybody on the committee could be a CPA, but the minimum number has to be one, because you've designated a seat for a CPA. No, no. The five community appointees, you each appoint someone to be approved by the full board. You can, those people can be CPAs or not. They could all be CPAs, but they could also, none of them could be CPAs.
Correct.
Doesn't matter. Separate and apart from those five people is another seat, and that person has to be a CPA. So, and that's not nominated by any of you, or you can nominate more than one, but you have to vote on the person.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll vote on that.
At the board meeting, at the regular board meeting. You'll vote on all these people at the regular board meeting.
I, I don't have anyone, Joe Bentley's fine with me.
Well, that's why, that, again, was process-wise of asking, making, making sure that person, I don't even know if we talked to him, okay? But because we did our appointees, and then we have the, the chair, right? And then we would have whoever our, you know, majority vote of or nomination for the CPA debt, you know, seat. I don't have anyone, so that was.
We could put Mike Pender in that and come up with an additional one, if that would work better for everyone. Yeah. Okay.
And Mike Pender, no, it's a practicing CPA.
Yeah. It has to be a practicing CPA.
In this county.
And so.
Joe Bentley is a practicing CPA in this county. Mike Bender.
What?
Does Mike Bender practice CPA?
Please, Eric, don't start disparaging, he's in.
I'm not disparaging him.
Kavanaugh and Company, of course he does.
Okay, okay.
Of course he does.
Is that Mike Pender be the CPA?
Okay. That's fine with me.
Then Jane comes up with another community member.
Yeah, so then you have to get somebody else.
Can I offer a suggestion, just because we hadn't figured this out? I understand that multiple CPAs could, and so, and I think that it's, as the way the policy would write, so we each, board member has their designee, doesn't matter what designations they have behind their name, they are the board's designee, and then there could be some recommendations for the CPA seat, and since I don't think we've discussed this, I was going to ask if that's something, we could have their resume sent, and then we would vote on it at the published meeting in, whenever that is, January, the first meeting in January, and be done with that. I just.
If Jane says that Mike Pender is still practicing, that's fine with me, Mike Pender's got a great reputation.
Well, he is practicing every day at Kavanaugh Company.
Okay.
Okay, so the only thing we're missing is your community.
Or somebody's community, and I really don't.
Yeah, why don't we just go with the names that are out here?
Those names are Mr. Matt Madden? Nate. Mike Pender, Sue Memminger, Eric Robinson, and John Crainer, and Caroline Zucker, and Mitzi.
And Joe Bentley?
Joe Bentley.
Joe Bentley.
Joe Bentley.
So Joe Bentley it is.
So Joe Bentley is the, he's not the CPA for the board, he is?
He's the CPA member.
Mike Ben, Mike Pender is. That's what I just.
It doesn't really matter, doesn't really matter.
That's what I just asked, and she, and Jane said yes. You weren't listening.
I'm confused now, but I'm fine with Mike being my designee and Joe Bentley being the other member on the board, which is, oh, by the way, CPA, yeah.
You're sure now? You're sure now? Okay.
Okay, and you will vote as a board to approve those?
Today.
Six people today.
Okay.
At your board meeting. I believe it's on new business.
The interim, any other discussion on this? Okay, so the next discussion is the interim superintendent. Excuse me.
I, I see that there's several names here. I think somebody got these, and could we have a little explanation of what it is, what they do, what the costs are?
What are you talking about?
When did we get these? What are these?
Aren't we doing interim, I should wait till we get to interim superintendent?
We are doing interim superintendent, but I don't have what you're referring to.
We got this today, it has people's names, resumes.
It's in your book?
This book?
She put, she made a book for you? Because you two wanted it in a book?
No, no, I don't, I don't have that.
So I'll just, I didn't, I have not looked at this outside of, I knew we were discussing it, but I don't.
Did you get this?
These firms?
No.
For whatever, this is the first time I'm seeing it, so.
Oh, no, I saw that, I'm sorry, I didn't have it in a book, I saw an email last week, but I, I've been gone for two weeks.
So where'd these come from? How about that? That's a good starting point.
Didn't, didn't you look at some firms or ask for some information from some firms?
From Tracy Baker? You're talking about the thing that Tracy put together?
No.
No.
This is for the interim superintendent?
The superintendent search, and we got some, there's some information here from McPherson and Jacobson, Ray and Associates, and I'm not quite sure who this is.
They were attached to my.
FSBA.
But they were attached to my interim superintendent discussion. I'm impartial, I just don't know where they.
Interim superintendent discussion.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I think this may be on a potential. Permanent superintendent search.
So these are firms?
I thought we were talking about your interim as a superintendent right now, that's what.
That's what I thought, but it was attached, that's why I said, I don't know what these attachments are, that's why I'm asking.
I think it was maybe the next part of the conversation.
Got it, okay.
I couldn't tell you, because I didn't know they were there either.
Well, I, I think we asked if there was anyone else that was looking at being the interim superintendent, and I don't believe anybody came forward.
And I also think there's been a change since certain people, you know, Dr. Vogel's name was discussed publicly, and then since then, he has decided to, to hold off, and so now it's, now what? And I know, I mean.
And I, yeah, to pick up from where we left off at the last workshop, when we were talking about appointing Mitzi superintendent, and, and she's done it, and then we were looking at Dr. Vogel, and others wanted to know, was there anybody else out there? It seems that there was nobody else out there. Dr. Vogel talked to me after interviewing some board members and Mitzi, he thought Mitzi was doing a terrific job, and that if he stepped in, it might upset the apple cart, and also it might be a conflict if, in fact, FSBA were to be hired to do the superintendent search, so he thought it best to sit back. But he also said that he thinks it's important to start that superintendent search now, so that we get someone in place, because there was some talk about waiting until after the election, but it wouldn't just be the election, because this new board member or members wouldn't be sworn in until November of 2020, and I surely do not want to wait for that. Not, not that there's any aspirations to how you're doing the job right now, but I think our, we need to put somebody in, and I think that's what we have here. Do we want to decide now? Are we going out?
I'd like to make a statement first.
Okay.
It's my intention that anyone who is running for school board can be a part of the discussions that we have regarding a permanent superintendent. That's how we did it with you when you came on, with Frank Hovach for his seat. You were part of the conversations. So, that's most, it'd be my intent to do that same thing in the future. Yes.
I also would like to, and it's something that Dr. Vogel mentioned too, is to have the, our principals and, it's the school-based administrators and the district administrators, that they also have input and have the interviews and maybe look at, you know, so that we get some input from them on, on how they think this person would be working with the district when we go forward.
Well, Tracy has put together a suggested timeline, not that we have to use this, but she's put forward a suggested timeline of meeting with all of our community partners. Eric.
I don't necessarily agree that we, if we're going to start our search now, I don't think that we should even be concerned about the election or not. I also, I understand, you know, you entitled your opinion, Ms. Zucker. I actually don't think that we should allow people who are running for office to be involved in the search process. My situation was slightly different because I wasn't running for office. I was, I was like in limbo, I was already elect, I wouldn't say I was elected, but I, no, I ran without, I don't know what they're quite...
Elected without votes, right?
Well, elected without, I did have a vote, it was me. It was, I was in a different situation. I think having two people up here who are running against each other, getting involved in the superintendent, is going to, we're going to regret that very quickly. So, but my situation is now, if you had one person who had won unopposed, or if, God forbid, it dragged on past August and somebody won the election, that would, that would certainly change things, but simply because people are running for office, I think having them involved in the selection process is going to be something that we quickly, quickly regret, in my own personal...
We can, we can at least include them in all the town hall meetings that we have.
Anybody can...
Make them aware of the town hall meetings so that they don't feel like they're completely shut out. This is really trying to reach out on all of them.
I understand, I understand what you're saying, but I think that if we had two people running against each other come up to the workshop, they're going to be nipping at each other. I understand what you're trying to do.
Maybe not.
We didn't let you speak at the workshops. We invited you to part, to sit in.
Right, right.
Let you in the room.
I did come up one time, I did come up one time at the workshop, but I'm just saying, it was a different situation.
And look where that led us.
I didn't vote for the guy. But I understand that you're reaching out for all of them, Ms. Zucker, and I really do appreciate that, but I just think that it's premature, and I think that if it came to the point where somebody had won this seat, then I would agree with you, Ms. Zucker, that that person should be involved in discussion, but that's my own...
That's your will, if that's the will of the board, that's where it would be.
Well, so then, should we not, I guess this is kind of, we moved past the interim superintendent?
No, we haven't.
There's more than one interim superintendent?
No, but there's, I want to make sure that we still have consensus that Mitzi Corcoran continues as the interim superintendent. Eric.
I have a question for Mitzi before we do. Do you want to continue to be the interim superintendent? I mean, we could all consensus say we want Mitzi to be, but the question is, are you okay? Are you okay? Just checking in?
She's okay. I asked her.
I think we all did.
I just want to hear from her.
Yes, no, and I am very humbled by your support, and I will do what I can to help lead the district and move forward until we find a permanent replacement, if that is the will of the board.
So...
I would like to make a comment about that. I saw Jacob Aliva in Tampa last week, and he's offered to help or come down, he and Paul Burns will come down and help, as well as Bill Vogel. And I think you're doing a terrific job, and I know I was quoted in the paper as saying that you're doing a terrific job, but I know that you have a great communications with a lot of people in this organization, and I think that's important, plus you understand the finance, and that's real important to me, at least. But I really think that, as far as I'm concerned, you have my support to be the interim until we decide on a new superintendent.
Art?
Assuming that's what's going to happen, and it sounds like it, then I would request that the board this afternoon at its meeting formally vote to authorize me to enter into discussion with Mitzi to get her a contract to serve as superintendent. I think now it looks like we're moving past a couple of weeks, and I think it's only fair to her and to the board to know what the parameters of that engagement are.
Sorry. That's okay. Well, no, I want to echo that. I think that, as I've said to many, and we said this last time, we don't know what this roadmap looks like. I am incredibly appreciative of you. I am stepping up, I have the utmost confidence, and I think it's, we don't know what that road looks like, and so, and I know that there's a lot of things going on in the district, but I also believe that, actually, reading the Sideman piece this morning, I thought that your humility comes forward, and actually, when I think about the circumstance that we find ourselves in, it's exactly probably what we need right now as we figure out what are the next steps. I, as, and I certainly agree that we need to solidify that. You know, I don't, I don't know what the rest of the timeline looks like, but I wanted to make sure, since it wasn't unknown, that you were okay with that. My only component of, so, the provisions of a contract, since that's been a hairy discussion in the past, I'm not suggesting that's anything that you're including yourself in, but having parameters set in place and not utilizing the, I mean, what, what would that look like?
Well, I haven't talked to Mitzi about it, so I guess that'll be part of the conversation, but I would think, since everybody recognizes this is a temporary situation, we just don't know quite how temporary. We would want provisions in it so that either side could terminate the contract on short notice, or what I would expect to happen is you mutually agree to terminate, you know, if you, for example, hired a new superintendent and that person was starting, I'm just picking a day, July 1, then we would have some kind of termination later when we know that, so that Mitzi's contract would expire on June 30. And I think, to be fair, from her perspective, we would also want a provision in that contract that says she moves back to her job, she hasn't really given up as CFO.
And that's, that's...
I do, I do.
Well, and that's, no, 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 but I'm very glad you said that, because that's kind of a number of questions that I have as we, we have, you know, I don't know how long a superintendent, so maybe these are intertwined, because I've been through a superintendent search, but sometimes they can take longer and sometimes they aren't, so we don't know what that looks like, and that's operating as CEO and CFO, two huge positions, but certainly making sure that that provision is such that she is able to go back to that. I mean, and the same would be, you know, when you have an acting, I think we've been so focused on the superintendent's side, but there's a lot of moving pieces that are leaving openings, but that I don't, and there, people are stepping up because they are trying to help us through this. I don't want them to, as things transition, I can't tell a new superintendent who and what, but I also want to be fair that jobs aren't filled.
Well, I mean, you, in essence...
You have to fill the CFO job.
Yeah, you, in essence...
That's a good, that's a good point, but I was thinking about...
You have a staff in place, when, whoever the new superintendent is, whenever they come, there's a staff in place. Now, that person over the course of a year could change out some of that staff, but I don't think you're hamstringing someone, but, I mean, if Dr. Vogel or anybody else other than Mitzi were the interim superintendent, she would continue to be the CFO, and she would be the CFO when the new permanent superintendent came in place. So, you're not really changing anything. You know, the only exception to that would be if something happens that we certainly wouldn't anticipate, and she would be terminated for cause, then that would be different, but nobody's expecting that, you know, to happen. So, I would foresee that, you know, if this does take longer than anticipated, and she says, I don't want to do it anymore, she would have the right to back away. On the other hand, the board would also have a right to say, we don't want you in this role anymore, but she would have the right to be the CFO. I don't expect any of that to happen. I expect it to be sometime in the, in the next several months to year, that you're going to mutually agree that contract terminates because you've hired a new person to be the superintendent, and she'll go back to be the CFO.
But it's better if it's in the contract, because otherwise, you're assuming.
No, that'll all have to be, that will be in the contract. I'm just telling you, I was asked, what do you, how do you foresee this? That's what I foresee.
Okay. Eric.
And because it's going to be a short time, and to keep things simple, and because she's doing two jobs, I mean, I would be more inclined to pay her in the range of what Bowden's last year's W-2 was, to recognize that she's actually doing two jobs.
Well, my, my assumption, and again, I haven't talked to Mitzi, so...
You know what that number is.
So, I was, I was just assuming we would, in essence, take most of the financial aspects of, of Dr. Bowden's contract and just carry him on from the salary and the car allowance and those kinds of things for that period of time when she's serving as superintendent. When she goes back to being CFO, then she'll go back to being CFO.
Annualized and...
Well, they'll have to be, they'll, some of them are annualized, but they'll basically have to be on a per-month basis.
My suggestion's much better for you, Mitzi.
No, I agree.
You know the number then.
Does anyone have any commentary, oddness issue of...
I think Mitzi and Art can handle this without further input from us.
Unless you need clarification, but I think we're...
Just trying to help a sister out.
No, I appreciate it very much, thank you.
Don't go new yet.
Okay, so then, I would just ask the board at this afternoon's meeting to include, and I'll remind you, to include a motion under new business to direct me to work with the superintendent to come up with a contract for her to serve as superintendent during this interim period of time. I won't call her an interim superintendent because Jean would beat that out of me years ago.
So, you can do a fact finding, and we're going to delegate responsibility.
You're just gonna, you're gonna tell me to go negotiate a contract, and I'm going to bring one back to you in January? That will be retro to November.
Okay.
Okay?
Tell Jenny, anybody want to discuss?
All right, thank you.
Anybody want to discuss it?
Discuss, discuss what?
Yeah, no, there won't be that.
No. Okay. All right, we're on to members' comments.
What about the superintendent's search? I mean, our, I guess we should have added it to the agenda, but, I mean, don't we need to get proposals and decide who we're going to be hiring? I mean...
I mean, if you want this to be a very long time, I do think we have to discuss it. I didn't know, I mean, I assumed we'd be...
I mean, it's not exactly...
I think we should move it until January and discuss it at the workshop.
I'm fine with that.
Come in early on the first, six o'clock.
On the first?
We can come in at 6:00 AM.
On New Year's Day?
On the first meeting.
Coming in on New Year's Day.
My birthday is... Our first meeting in January. Eric.
My, my only hope is, is that it's all done at the board, it's all done amongst the five of us. That's, that's my only request, is that it's done at the board and it's done amongst the five of us.
I agree. I think we've been doing a good job.
Should we get proposals from these or others to come back to us so that we can make a decision on what firm we're going to hire?
Do you want Carol to do a formal?
I mean, how did we do it the last time?
You guys just went there.
I don't think there was any process. I think it just was selected as one recommendation. I think...
There was a process, and I've asked Kathy to bring it off.
Thank God, Art, you're...
Yeah, I asked him before this...
I think there are two, there are two aspects, there are two aspects. One is, are you going to hire a search firm, and if so, whom? And last time, my recollection, which could be wrong, but is, the board hired FSBA. I don't think there was any request for proposals or anything. You hired FSBA. So, the first thing you have to decide, I believe, is, are you hiring somebody? And I'm hearing consensus to do that. Then the, the second question is, who? And subsumed within that question is, how do you decide that who? Do you want, do you have somebody you know you want to hire, or do you want to put out a request for proposals?
RFI.
I'm looking at Carol for exactly what it is.
Do what I just did, a request for a letter of interest.
Yeah, I like letters of interest, yeah.
And then, and then, if you're going to do that, I see no reason to not start that process, and then you'll see what you get, and you'll ultimately hire someone. So, that's kind of step one. Step two is, once you have that group in place, you'll certainly want to get their input, but you're also going to be driving, driving the boat, and as far as what kind of community involvement, oftentimes, and these kind of blend together, I've been through a few of them, but I'm never really in the middle of it, so my recollection may be somewhat fuzzy, but I know frequently committees are set up of citizens that board member, I think it was last time, each board member appointed two people?
Yes.
Somebody may remember better, something like that. And then you had, you know, to narrow, to narrow the number of resumes you get, to give you recommendations, at least to narrow, and then you brought a certain number, and I don't remember the, I think it was three, three or four people in, to meet with community, to meet with you, of course, but also to meet with community groups. So, the, I'm not trying to steer you in any particular direction, but those are the kinds of issues you need to decide. What is your public process going to look like? And certainly, whatever consultant, headhunter you hire can, can help with that.
That's what I was going to say, don't they do that?
They do, but, but you're, I mean, they coordinate it, but they're going to need direction from you of, you know, is there going to be a, there doesn't have to be a committee, but I think the board historically has had one. There doesn't have to be community meetings, but historically, there have been some, and I think those are good ideas.
Tracy has put together, she thought it was going to be for interim, but it applies more for the permanent superintendent. So, I'll ask Kathy to send that out to all of us. Okay?
So, but, but step one, I would think, be thinking about that, but step one is hiring the consultant who's going to help you.
Okay. I have to ask the question, are we going to hire a consultant, or are we doing, are you interested in doing something else? Because I've heard a lot of things out there, so I want to know what you're interested in doing.
I think it, I'll just go first since I'm talking already. I, I think it would be helpful, I would like to see what other firms are out there, too. I think that it's a pretty important process. I definitely want to make sure that it's open and transparent, both on the selecting on who the firm is, but I think we're doing that right now in that process, but also to ensure that selection, and it's opened up. But we would decide, you know, the qualifications and all those other processes after the fact, so I'm, I'm fine with hiring a firm, but again, making it a discussion amongst us and seeing what their qualifications are. That's where I...
Let me ask you, do you not want, double negative, not want FSBA to do it? It's the last one. Eric.
I know the three of you guys really care about the FSBA, and so, again, in the, in the interest of, of cooperation, I'm willing to do that. I just would like to ask some questions of FSBA, because there were some issues that came up at the, the last search that I want to ask them before I say yes. And so, I understand you guys have a affinity to them, I'm willing to acquiesce to that existing relationship. All I ask is that, I have a couple of questions I want to ask of them to ensure some of the issues that came up last time won't come up this time.
Sure.
I'll, I'll give you, I'll give you one. There was some, they had sold themselves off as, we have relationships with people throughout the state of Florida, we will be able to vet people because we, we know people in every single district, and then stuff came out about Dr. Bowden after the fact about some stuff that happened in Tampa. So, I'd want to ask them about what, what happened there, and is, have you guys changed your processes to make sure that doesn't happen again? So, that was one. I can give you another if you would want, but I'd prefer to wait to ask them. But I'll, I'll give you another example if you want.
So, would you like for me to contact FSBA and see if they would be willing to come to either your workshop or a board meeting, and we could have it as an item of new business, and they can make a presentation, or however you want to do it, so that they can come in and you can ask your questions to get comfortable, or?
Well, I think that's no different than any firm. I was going to say, I wouldn't preclude anyone out. I appreciate you asking, and I know why, and so I appreciate you asking that, but
and they can make a presentation or however you want to do it so that they can come in and you can ask your questions to get comfortable or?
No, I think that's no different than any firm. I was going to say, I wouldn't preclude anyone out. I appreciate you asking and I know why, and so I appreciate you asking that, but I would say, I mean, I also, I had some concerns, but I don't want to say they're off the table. I mean, so my thing is that if they want to participate in the letter of interest, if they are interested in helping us as one of the other firms, then we include them and in the event they're bubbled up, then those questions be asked, I suppose.
I think we look at three firms, there are three firms that are working in Florida right now that I know of. FSBA is one of those, but I think we should look at several firms and, and go from there. And that makes it more transparent, right?
I obviously prefer that.
I agree, I would agree.
So that would be my, that would be my hope, is that we would have several people in to give us...
So I'm going to ask Carol then to send out a letter of interest, a request for letters of interest to prospective vendors. And what is the scope? It's experience in hiring a K through 12 superintendent, superintendent in the state of Florida.
I like broader scope.
Broader scope, I mean...
I like, I like Florida.
They should have some experience, but yeah.
Because it's very, really hard to work here.
So it would be Florida experience preferred.
In Florida, without having that knowledge of how Florida works. But that would be the only thing I, yes.
I don't want to just narrow it to just Florida.
That wasn't, yeah, yeah, it's helpful.
I mean, I understand that there's, there's a university that, that actually is teaching superintendent and all of those things, and, and there were some people from there that were interested in coming to Florida. And I was actually surprised that we were getting interest from out of state and in-state and even employees, former employees that were interested. And several of these sounded very good already, but I don't want to, I mean, I think...
Are we talking about a search firm or the individual?
The individual.
Oh, no, no, I think we're talking about the firm.
About a firm.
Oh, I, yeah, so I want to, yeah.
That's why I didn't know.
Florida firm. Well, I thought, if, I don't know if there's more than these three, but yeah, let's, let's...
These, these three are strictly for, oh, not for, not for, for the sexual harassment.
No, no, this is superintendent.
No, 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 there's three attached to...
No, there are three firms that work in Florida. There are three different search firms that I know of that are currently involved in active searches.
Okay, so I, I think those three, or if there's anybody else, but yeah, I would think when we do the search, we, for the superintendent, we go beyond Florida. I don't know how far we have to go to get a firm, but I would think a firm that works in Florida.
Yeah, you're always on step two, I feel like, the next one, you're ready to go. No, I, I agree.
Step ahead of it.
The, the letter of interest, I would prefer it not, I don't want to, I mean, like I said, we ended up with 14, but I thought it was a good exercise. And going back to what Jane and Eric said, as far as the transparency, I think that at the end of the day, when I think of people who are going to resupply, they know we're looking for a superintendent, you'd have to imagine that they have some experience there. You'd have to imagine that Florida would be beneficial in having some K-12 experience, but I don't necessarily know if it makes, I mean, do we have to be that narrow? I think...
She can just do a headhunter search.
When you get down to travel costs and all of that, it's like, yeah.
Well, I don't...
But that's our job.
That's one of the big, so, travel.
Yeah. That's what we'll decide, I mean, when, when we see the firms, so.
All right, so from what I've heard, we're going to have a, a motion this afternoon to direct me to work, work with Mitzi to get her a contract as the superintendent for the time being. And then Mitzi will have Carol get information on headhunter firms, similar to what we got recently with the sexual harassment stuff. We know there are at least three firms that presumably will respond, maybe others, and get you that information in January so that one of those can be hired. So we'll be hiring lots of people in January.
Okay. So does this need, this doesn't need to come back for a discussion, needs to come back when we get the...
Names of the firms.
When we get the names for the other people that are interested.
I would think that would be the next step, would be for staff to present you with that information in January.
I hope we can do that by January meeting, second meeting. Okay, thanks, Carol.
Yeah, if, if we're going to be having the discussion before the first January meeting on...
No.
No, we're going, going to do it all on the workshop, okay.
Okay. Carol, you, you all right? No? Okay. Thank you.
She's under control.
Any other comments?
Before you close this meeting, I would like to talk, but at the end, because we're going to need to recess to go into the litigation meeting at 1:00, but if, I'm not, we can't, well, we have to wait until 1:00 because we don't have a court reporter until 1:00.
I have a brief member comment, but I think someone else did, so.
Art, talk.
No, he's, he's adjourning at the end.
She has a comment.
I'm last.
But I don't want you to go anywhere because I push her.
Are you last now?
Okay, so we're in member comments.
After member comments, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we were doing member comments already. Okay.
Who's got a...
And I'm not sleeping either.
I'll, I'll make a comment.
Jane?
I just wanted to say that we did have a great session at FSBA last week. Some good work with superintendents. We did put out a joint press release on Wednesday stating that we support the governor's proposal. And it was a broad brush because we still don't know exactly how that's going to end up, do we? But we felt, felt the Superintendents Association and Florida School Board Association thought it was important for us to, to put out that information and we, we did so. And I think that's a good thing. And we were, this is last week that committee meets in Tallahassee and session starts on the 14th of January, and that's just around the corner. So we're all eager to see how things go in the next session. And I would say that probably one of the highlights for me of the conference was the, the work that's being done around the state in, in harassment and safety and security and some of the things that we, we know are very important here and look forward to, to seeing how the session breaks out.
Shirley.
I, too, enjoyed the FSBA conference. One of my highlights was when Alberto Carvalho, Carvalho, he's the superintendent of Miami-Dade Schools. They're the fourth largest school district in the nation and they've got like 35 cities, nine school board members, 350,000 students, and they, their students come from over 150 different countries and they speak 56 different languages. And I'm sure we all understand the makeup of Miami-Dade. They, too, have a lot of students that, you know, aren't free and reduced lunch with all these different languages, but they have, are managing to overcome a lot of those things that we say, oh, this is what happens, this is, this is why a student has problems and why we can't make it. The NAEP testing, those are the national tests that they do on, on student achievement, whereas Florida was pretty flat, the US was pretty flat. Miami-Dade was like one of the leading schools for improvement, even though they've got all those, what would have been considered negative. And, you know, I, I think they've got a lot of good things going for them, but a lot of it has to do with their positive attitude and working together as a good staff and all of that. And I think it's something we might want to look to, you know, see what they're doing right, because obviously they're doing a lot of different things right. And they said, their focus is on student achievement and, and developing great teachers, having data-driven decision-making, aligning the resources with their needs, demand-driven reform and engaging the community. And they've embraced charter schools, in fact, they have, they have created charter schools to meet the needs, or you can call them charter schools, magnet schools, but they've looked at what do we need to do differently and how can we better serve? But they always try to keep student achievement at the center. And unfortunately, we've kind of gone off the rails on that with some of these other things that are taking our time, but hopefully we'll be able to get back to that and, you know, keep, keep our decisions around student achievement and moving forward.
Anyone else want to comment? Bridget?
I would tell you, operationally, they're huge, fascinating when you think about how much Miami-Dade has to work on. I wanted to, and that's why Art's sitting here, because I said, "Don't go anywhere." So I know a couple of us were tagged on a social media post about intellectual property, I'm not going to say, I don't know if I was saying it right, but for our VPA program. And so I had, Cosme, I had some questions and then, so I just wanted to take a quick moment, I know we talked about this. I don't know the, you know, specific incident there, I'm talking at a broader level from a program, but it did, it found itself as a very interesting topic because we have our VPA program and as, and I think Art, we were all on the, we are all on the email that had mentioned, had suggested as to some of the reasons why, and it's if you have, you know, to sign this, is it waiver and agreement? It's a, but, but the reason when you have a multiple, multitude of parties, I'd also thought, you know, from a copyright standpoint, when we have to, the district or the schools are entering into agreements for utilizing copyrighted material. I know that we're involved with film, I don't know, film contests and some of that. And so it raised a question, so I understand when there's multiple parties involved, I started to ask, well, what does it mean, I mean, do we require it? And I haven't read it, but if it's just some standalone individual students, obviously, I think it's just important from the public, it's not that we're, the district's trying to hold on to or keep the rights to their, to their material. I don't know if you want to speak to that and...
Sure, I can, I can give a little bit of information because I am not an intellectual property lawyer, which is why we've associated Doug Cherry with the shoemaker firm, who is a very good intellectual property lawyer, to help with this. And he has, since last summer, I believe, got, been involved with Booker High School because issues were raised when one of their films that the students and faculty had produced were going to be entered into a festival, I believe, into the storm. And there were some issues because as I, what I am told is that pretty much everybody who works on a film, including camera people and others, not just the, perhaps author of the script, arguably at least, has, has copyright intellectual property rights in the creation. And so what we asked Doug to do was to give us some advice on that. And his advice was, we needed to get releases from the participants, their parents, because they're mostly minors, so that the school board did control the right to use those group projects for purposes of things like entering them into film festivals and the like. The flip side of that is also there are occasions on which we are given license to produce films. And we often are given those licenses under very strict parameters about what we can do with them, i.e., we can use them for the educational purposes, but not to make money. So we also need to be able to control the property in that context so that we don't violate our agreement with the, with the artist who, who created the content in the first place. So that is the purpose of this. It is not to make money for the school, but to allow these group projects to be used for the benefit certainly of the school, but also of all the students involved. To the extent that, and based on this, we're going to look again at the agreement that we have people sign, because perhaps it's broader than, perhaps the language is broader than necessary to accomplish that goal. The goal is not, and has not been, to say if an individual student paints a painting, that somehow the school board owns that painting. It's not to try to take things away from an individual, other than in the context of these collaborative projects where arguably maybe 30 or 40, I don't know how many students participate, you know, could have some right. We don't want in that context there to be any issues about veto power over, well, I'm not going to give you my consent to do this. So I think to the extent that anybody is saying, "We're trying to profit off of this," that's inaccurate. And that's the, the reason that we're doing it is to try to broaden opportunities for students and the school. It's good, it's good, it's good for everyone when that happens, like the, the one that went into the film festival last time.
So my question was, one, make sure that it's across all the VPA programs. I don't know if they're, and I don't want to make this a huge project necessarily, but if there are any other agreements that we require families. I just think it was a good educational experience because if it can be such that it's not so broad that we aren't...
Well, and we'll look at that. And we also, I talked briefly yesterday to Mr. Cantis and Ms. Hardfixson and Ms. Kokosa about perhaps where else this is going on. I'm familiar with it in the VPA program at Booker, so we're going to look to see if there are other contexts in which, which are similar.
Just so that we're aware.
I mean, it should be the same, wherever we have similar circumstances. I think Booker is a unique program in many ways, but there may be some of the same issues going on elsewhere.
And then just making sure, however those schools or programs are putting out, because I mean, anyone who gets a legal contract, unless you read it for a regular basis, it can be a bit jarring and so understanding it, I think there's an educational opportunity in here, too, so that we are clear.
On the back part.
Yeah, we may, and we may need to look at the method of, the method of delivery.
The first part of it. Shirley.
I'm sorry, I'd like to add something to our next workshop, and that is the rental facility contracts. Again, at the risk management thing. I understand that, you know, Sun Products, we've got some company that goes out there and actually does some of this for us and rents the places out, but, and they're doing a good job, we're getting them rented out, but we're renting them, you know, not really at commercial rates. The Riverview Performing Arts Center, I believe, is rented out for like $1,000 to Sun Productions, who brings in different groups, and they're charged between $35 and $50 a ticket. You know, they're making $40,000. I don't think that that's where we really were looking at. I mean, I think we were looking at nonprofits and stuff using it. I mean, if they're going to be used for commercial purposes, I think we really need to rethink our contracts to maybe, maybe even have a percent of the ticket costs. But also, we need to look over the risks involved, like if there's a slip and fall. Are we the ones who are going to get sued or is this company going to get sued? Do they need police protection, a police presence there? And what about property damage? Because they're putting food trucks out in the parking lot. And all of this, I think it's a great use of the facility. I mean, I got to see, you know, the Bee Gees Now, I mean, it brought me back, you know, and they've got all kinds of groups coming up. But I think with the Elton John and the Queen, I mean, we might be getting a little different...
Is it Elton John at one of our schools?
Do you pay $50 to see a fake Bee Gees?
I only, I bought the $40 ticket. They were good. I mean, when you go out and see supposedly, well, no, the real Bee Gees are, I don't know, but you go out to see these real groups that were popular when I was, I mean, maybe only one of them is still there and the rest of them are not...
Usually they're none of them.
Or none of them, yeah. I mean, you know.
You're talking about Faciltron?
I mean, when you go to see the Allman Brothers bands, you don't really see the Allman Brothers anymore. I mean, so, but they're using, and I know when there was an Italian, I mean, a Chinese dance troupe that was at the Venice Performing Arts Center, and those tickets were $100, $200 apiece. And I'm like...
That's why we are having them this year.
But, you know, I think if, they're going to be using our facilities to make money, we need to be looking at it and to make sure that, I mean, perhaps we get a cut of that or, but at the very least, that we look at ourselves to, to reduce our risk regarding the slip and falls, the, the damage to property and do we need a police presence?
I know, I know what Booker High does. Booker High, they're really clear and they don't, they don't have any problems.
Well, could we have facilities bring those, some of these things to us so we can have a larger discussion on it at the next workshop?
Yeah, no, I, I think there is, I think we do actually need to have a discussion. I think there's some concerns by some of the principals because they're not generating a revenue that they used to generate, because we aren't making money from nonprofits, we're just charging them our costs. But there's an...
We need a convention center in this county.
Administrative fees and some different things, because it is pretty time-consuming on the part. I agree with Shirley, there are some issues with nonprofits renting by, but then ultimately producing a for-profit show that we maybe need to talk about. We may need to relook at, the board had a discussion last year, I believe it was, where if an entity has done something and put an improvement in with speakers or something like that, they would receive 50% off their rent. So the issue then becomes this same renter who's putting in speakers is also the same as the one that's renting and producing shows, so they're renting as a nonprofit but making a profit. So there's lots of conversations I think that we can have. Jody and I've had numerous conversations on this particular topic.
And there's damaged equipment as well.
There is.
But the people putting the equipment in are people who aren't just coming in for the Bee Gees Now. The people putting the equipment in are like the volleyball club or the foot, you know, it's people who have a longstanding relationship. No one's going to come and do the sound system and be gone.
I, I didn't really mean for this to take, you know, until, I mean, I think it needs to go to the next workshop, is what I'm asking.
Okay. Thank you. And that...
I would add, if you're, if you all are through...
Yes.
I would ask the board to recess this meeting, perhaps for a time for lunch, and then to reconvene in a litigation meeting in our ongoing ESE case, which will be a private meeting, at which the board members, the superintendent, myself and special counsel Kevin Penley and my partner, Mr. Dubose, will be there. It will be with a court reporter and it will be to get the board's input and direction on that litigation. And that may, depending on the board's direction, require a further motion at the regular board meeting that begins at 3:00.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.